Welcome. This is Tuesday, December 20th, and this is ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools. This is our regular school board meeting. We are here at East High School because at the current time, we are out of our old building on Second Street. We used to call it Hox. That's now being renovated for housing for the city of Duluth, and we're really excited about that. And see that as a great use and opportunity for our city. But that also then means that while our district service building is being built up on the central high school hillside, we are temporarily located at East High School. And we want to thank East High School for the opportunity to be here. And we appreciate any of the shifting they have to do for the use of this space during our school board meetings. Again, this is ISD 709 Duluth Public Schools. It is our monthly regular school board meeting. I'm going to turn to member Sadowski. She's going to be our acting clerk tonight as member Oswald is joining us virtually. And she'll take our role.
Member Derek Eater.
Present.
Member Kirby.
Here.
Member Lafferty Kent.
Here.
Chair Local.
Here.
Member Oswald.
Here.
I am here. Member Sandholm.
Present.
Superintendent Magus.
Present.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds.
Present.
Finance Director Zunich.
Present.
HR Director Severance.
Here.
Board Secretary Pickett.
Here.
Board Secretary Carroll excused. Student Rep Saraya Crawford is excused. And then Student Rep Eileen Os.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. And I just, I think our student rep Saraya Crawford will join us virtually. So we'll watch for that as well. And then when she enters, we'll mark her. So thank you. Thank you so much. And again, this is our regular school board meeting. And I was going to say something, and then I forgot. So we are called to order. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are now on number four of our agenda. It's approval of the agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Member Lafferty Kent, I'm looking for a second to the agenda.
Second?
Member Sadowski has seconded it. And is there discussion? And there is. Because I'm going to ask school board members if we can add to our agenda two items. We'll need a motion to add these, but I'm asking to add to the agenda under 13G the resolution for our polling place and the actual, the actual resolution number. Or is resolution reestablishing? Nope, it's not that one. It is resolution. Wait, I put it here.
I got it here. It's B 1222, 2926.
Okay. What's it called, though?
Reestablishing precincts and polling places for the Duluth Public Schools.
Nope, that's not, that's not the one. That's the one, that is on there. That's on the agenda already.
Oh, okay.
It's the one that is talking, that we got in our email about, about the idea of reducing polling places in a special election. And I have that here. It's right here. I got it. I've got it. And it is just called amending resolution establishing combining polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open. And it is a resolution. And I'll read the numbers when we're there. But we're going to add that to our agenda under 13G if we're approved. And you will get a copy of this. I've got it in my folder.
You don't have it.
You don't have it yet because we haven't approved adding it. And then I also want to add the contract for the firemen and oilers, right, HR Severance? And we would add that under 14C, under special resolutions and action items? Okay. So we'd add 14C, and it's approval of the contract for our firemen and oilers. So I'm looking for a motion to approve those two additions to our agenda.
So move.
Member Eater and a second with member Sandholm. And then I'll just pass the resolution down. Do we? So there's three down this way. I'm passing out just the resolution that we added to the agenda right now, but we haven't voted on it, right? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. So all those in favor of accepting the motion, the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for our approval of our agenda. Thank you. That's kind of a process there. Thank you. And so next, number five, is our school and community recognition. And I'll turn it over to superintendent, assistant superintendent Bonds.
Well, thank you for the promotion.
Always looking at your best interest.
Wait a minute. Thank you and welcome, everyone. I would like to call up to the table Principal Sebel, Duluth East High School, as well as representatives from the Unified Champion School.
I feel weird sitting down, but okay.
I know. I want the podium back as a public speaking teacher. Why is that podium?
So, dear members of the board, tonight we recognize, we recognize Duluth East High School on becoming a Unified Champion School. Unified Champion Schools is a program that aims to engage students with and without intellectual disabilities in inclusive student leadership, unified sports, and whole school engagement activities designed to create a school community that fosters respect and dignity for all. The vision of Unified Schools is to activate youth, engaged educators, and to promote acceptance and inclusion in school communities. Over 200 schools in the state are already officially Unified Schools, with another 100-plus schools engaged in unified programming on some level. Shannon Murray, the Unified Schools Coordinator for Northern Minnesota, had this to say about Duluth East. Quote, "We are so excited to have Duluth East join Unified. The students, staff, and admin have jumped right in with so much enthusiasm and energy for spreading inclusion in their school and beyond. East hosted the first Duluth area Unified Track and Field Invitational last spring, just weeks after joining Unified. And this fall, they piloted a fun Unified Flag Football matchup with Cloquet during the varsity football game halftime show. This idea has since been picked up by other Unified Schools. I had the pleasure, I know superintendent did as well, attending the Track and Field Invitational and the Varsity Football Halftime Game. And what we saw were just students elated, smiles on their face, the enthusiasm, the joy, not only from the students with special needs, but also from all of our other students as well. It was just, it was interesting to see all of the joy that exists, especially from the families as well. So tonight, we recognize those who stepped up at Duluth East High School to make sure that these students feel welcome and included. And so I'm going to turn it over to Principal Sebel and our representatives to share a little bit more information about Champion Schools.
Following our theme for the day, I'm going to do all the talking, because I promised Cassie I would. So thank you for being here. We started down this path years ago. I think before I even came to East, the Circle of Friends Activity Club started at East, which partners students of all abilities to just learn more with and about each other. They play games during win. They do a number of different activities. They help sponsor school-wide events at East. And then we added Unified PE. I believe this is its fourth year. COVID kind of derailed us. But Unified PE partners students who receive adaptive FIAID services with non-disabled peers who, again, learn more about each other. It's an incredible, I think you both had the privilege of being part of that class when you were serving as paraprofessionals here. But it's just, it's a really fun class to be part of. It's a big group here at East. I want to say we're approaching 100 students in the gym. It is also the highest-staffed event in the district daily, because there are so many paras, our adaptive FIAID teacher, we have a regular FIAID teacher, and then Cassie is in there as the team teacher. And then we also have other teachers and staff who are there to help. And so, again, they're learning about each other, participating in FIAID together. Many of those students and students who are part of Circle of Friends participate in community outings with our students. There's a swimming event coming in. I thought it was just moved to February. I'll talk later. They've gone on bowling outings, rock climbing at UMD. So again, we're partnering students together who just have a great time. It's fantastic to have additional hands to help with ice skating, tying skates, things like that. And then we added the last piece of this puzzle. Oh, the school-wide events. Down Syndrome, Rock Your Socks Day, Live Unified Day is coming in January, this Wednesday of finals week, 17, 18? And so we'll celebrate as a school on that day our official Unified Champion School status. To earn that status, you had to have all of those components. And the last piece was competition events. So our Track and Field Invitational was the last piece of that puzzle. So when she says we jumped in, we did, but we really only had one big piece left. And that was a heavy lift for this team. It was a significant event to organize and plan. Sharon, Shannon and Sharon, I intermix the names. But Shannon helped us really organize and plan that event. Sharon Brown, who's our adaptive FIAID teacher here at East. Cassie and our other setting three teachers and paras. Joe Heideloff, who is the Unified PE teacher, worked really hard with a ton of student help. If you were here for that event, it was incredibly fun. We had a number of area schools join us. We anticipate that it will grow. We're the biggest school in Northern Minnesota, so we have the ability to field a little more teams than many. But things like the Track and Field Invitational, you can bring five students and participate. So it was really fun. We had shirts made. Now that we are officially Unified Champion School, he talked about the football event we had. We also had a bowling invitational competition on December 2nd with a number of area schools. But we created, I've decided to, you know, if I ever put my job on it, to design t-shirts. But we created t-shirts that aren't activity-specific. So if you've got a Unified Track and Field Invitational shirt, they're great. These are now our Unified Champion School shirts. So the quote on the back is changing the world as a team sport, play Unified. We've brought one for each of you. That's why Patty was asking for your shirt sizes earlier. I grabbed some extras so that I hopefully have one for each of you. Today, I'll leave the pile with Patty for later, and then any extras, you can just be here. We are absolutely thrilled to have earned this status. And it's, while those, the fun competition events are the showy, super fun school spirit things, really changing how we operate and making that more part of our way of being, making sure they're part of our student leadership teams. We have Circle of Friends rep who are on POV, which I could tell you about another day. But we really want to be known as a really welcoming and inclusive school. And this is a huge step for us, and it's been a really fun journey to be on. So thank you for the recognition tonight. Thank you, Cassie, who is our official Champion School coordinator, who's doing a lot of the work behind the scenes. So, thank you.
Wow.
Should we bring our banner?
Yes.
Yes. It's not very big. Who's going to travel through the classroom together and everything?
And thanks.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the shirt.
Thank you.
Thanks for the shirt.
We'll see you at Track and Field Invitational.
Yeah. It was fun, huh?
So, yeah, I'm just blown away with the, I didn't realize it was an actual, like, like program. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And I don't, you know, Assistant Superintendent Bonds, you know, you're, what was written about this? Could you share that with board members? I just think it gives me an understanding of what this whole unified school, I feel like it's another, like, league. Like it's, you know, like an opportunity for a lot of things. So I learned to have just a copy of it as it explains a little bit more.
No problem. And I do want to add, Principal Sebel was correct. I think I mentioned this before. I think this community would be so impressed, and this community should be so proud of how we support some of our most students with some of the most difficult challenges. It's so impressive when you are in the gym and working with them and you're in a classroom. It's truly amazing. I'm always, I get emotional when I'm in there, because I'm like, wow, I can't believe I can provide this level of support for our students. And it's amazing, the opportunities that we provide students with special needs here. So truly, the district and the team.
And then again, wasn't it last month, too? Not to take any dim away your bright stars. It's great. It weren't, wasn't our district acknowledged for being the employer of our students that, you know, have some issues? And so we employ a lot of our students as well as they grow into adulthood?
It's not just necessarily students, but individuals with disabilities. So we were recognized as being an employer that is very flexible and supportive of the diverse needs of the workforce. We're recognized by the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. So moving off of number five to, so are we doing, we're doing the audit before public comment tonight because our audit has another appointment. So number six now is our 22 audit presentation. Thank you. Just a little reading material to our little, we should face. I'm glad you contributed to get, like, to read it more on. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Michelle Swoboda from Whitley. She's a partner and was our main auditor. And we were closely together for the last four or five months.
All right. Thank you for having me. And this is our presentation on your audit for June 30th, 2022. This is a very brief summary of everything in your actual financial statements, of course. So if you had questions on those, let Simone know. She can answer them or get them to me, and I can answer those questions. I want to go through the slides, the first, second slide. So this is our responsibility for your audit, is to express an opinion on the basic financial statements, to report on compliance and internal controls over your financial reporting, to report on compliance and internal controls over your federal programs under uniform guidance, and report on compliance with the Minnesota statutes that we are required to test. Next slide, we actually give our results. So we gave an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is a clean opinion. We did have several internal control findings over financial reporting, material weaknesses. The first one, we had significant audit adjustments and significant accounts that needed to be reconciled. The second one is we actually prepared your financial statements for you and disclosures, and that is a management responsibility, but we have done that for you. I did want to note on the first item, though, this is a repeat from last year for your audit adjustments and reconciliation. But I have to say, we were very happy with the improvement that, of the progress that's been made over the last year. And we spent a lot of time working with Simone and her team to make sure that things are getting adjusted and getting reconciled and working together. So great improvement over the last year, so let's, let's hope that continues. We did test two of your federal programs under uniform guidance. This year, we tested Head Start and then your education stabilization funds. And we did not have any findings of over compliance or internal controls on those two programs that we tested.
Can you repeat the second one real quick?
Your education stabilization fund. So your ESTER, mostly ESTER, I believe. There may have been a little bit of your here funds in there, too. But that, that was the second pot of money that we tested. And then with Minnesota statutes that we tested, we did not have any non-compliance there either to report. Next slide, as you can see, your general fund, unassigned fund balance did have a bit of an increase this year. So that's, you know, what you want to see. It's been increasing steadily. This year, you did have about a $1.7 million increase in your unassigned fund balance in your general fund. Next is going through your fund balances. And I'll just note, if you look at the June 30th column, you've got a little bit of non-spendable. The second section down is all of your restricted funds. So if you look at all the items there, those are the, those are dollars that are restricted for those purposes. That's about 5.9 million of your fund balance is restricted. Then you do have a group of assigned fund balances below that. And those are also restricted, or not restricted, sorry, assigned for those different projects there. And that's a little over $10 million there. So then what is left over is your unassigned. So you can see you had 5.5 million in your unassigned fund balance. And you can see that increase there of almost 1.7 million. And just to, this is real quick overview. There's so many variables going on in your financial statements. But just noting your revenue, and we'll look at that in the next slide, was over budget. A lot of that is your ESTER funding. You got more ESTER money. And then spending some of your other state and federal aid money down, too. And then, of course, if you're spending more money in ESTER funds, your expenditures were also over budget because you were spending that money. And then you did have some capital projects also going on. So if we take a look at your general fund results of operations, so first column is going to be the budget. Second is your actual final numbers. So you can see the revenues is the first line, over budget by 470,000. And your expenditures, next section down, over budget by 452,000. So you actually, if you look at the budget, where it says excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures, you had budgeted a loss of 2.6 million. And that's right about where you came in there, a loss of 2.6 million. And then you did have some other financing sources that came into play there, sale of capital assets. And then leases, this is a new accounting standard. So your leases, we did have to record some leases this year. So then your net change in fund balance, middle column, third line from the bottom, a positive 1.9 million. And that's where your increase in your unassigned was, where it came from there. Next is your food service fund. So as you can see, you were also over budget, 1.2 million. A lot of additional food and service revenue with all of your free meals and all of those programs going on. Expenditures, just a little bit under budget of 92,000. So you did end up having a net change in fund balance, a positive for the year in your food service fund of $1,013,000. And you'll note at the bottom, a little bit of it, it's inventory, non-spendable, but the bulk of it is restricted for food service. Next, your community services fund, over budget in your revenue, 412,000. And I apologize, I've got an error here. You were actually under budget in your expenditures. It looks like you're over, but you were under budget. And I can send you an update to get that fixed. But if you look at the middle column, you did have income in community services for $400,000 for the year. And if you look down at the bottom, all of that money, again, is also restricted for your community services fund. Capital projects. Now, this is, these dollars are going to, this is where somebody thinks through with all your projects that are going on. So you didn't budget any revenue because you, the revenue came in before. But you did have a little bit of investment income there. Your expenditures were budgeted at 3 million, actually spends about 12 million. So just spending that fund balance that you've had down. So a loss in that fund of 12, 12,735. But keep in mind, that money is meant to be spent down. So that, you're going to see a loss there as you're spending that money down. But you did have several new bonds of 41,532,000, and then a few other items. So your actual change in the fund balance in that fund was a positive 32,157. So, and that money is all restricted for your future projects. Your debt service fund, revenues were a little bit over budget, over budget, 2.4 million. Expenditures over budget, and that's, I've got an error there, too. Sorry. That's 1.895 over budget there. So you just break even in that fund of 6930 for the year. And then, again, that money is also all restricted.
Will you tell me again, where is the mistake in the expenditure column?
Oh, sorry. So in the, the column that says over/under budget, your expenses are actually over budget, not under. So I've got, I've got to fix that. That should not have the correctives around that. So I'll get that fixed. Your next slide just talks about your outstanding debt. So like I said, you did have two new bonds during the year, as you can see. 31,431,497, and then to 10,350,000. Principal paid, if you go down to the bottom, you did pay 18,690,000 on principal on your bonds. So at the end of the year, go up to, you've got total general obligation bonds of almost 70,696,967,000. And certificates of participation of 123,990 for a total bonds at the end of the year of 193,957. So I know that's a very brief overview of what is a large financial with a lot of moving parts. But did you have any other questions for me?
So how long have, have we been partnering with Whitley for our audit?
A lot of years. Myself, I've only been on it three years, but the partner who retired, I took her spot. She's been doing it three, four, five, six years, something like that. So quite a while.
Yeah. Probably as long as you have been. I just, I think there is some security in when we, we work with our auditor and you know our, our district, you know where, you know, you know our team. And so I just really know that you're looking at this with the long history you have with our district and the responsibility you have maintaining and making sure you're telling us, you know, what we're working on and what we need to improve on and where we're at. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, my question is on the material weaknesses. That, you said it was being improved. Is that due to staffing problems or what is the cause?
So basically, learning Skyward. Our, that has been, you know, last year was a huge challenge for us. And this year, we came, we did so much better. And this year, I mean, you know, I spoke with Michelle earlier about this. I mean, I just feel like we had such a better handle on it this year, and it's going to get better every year. Skyward is completely different from that Business Plus program they used. And we have, we're learning to extract information from Skyward. we're learning to extract, extract information from Skyward in a better fashion, and, you know, that is our goal, and we are already, I already have some other processes in place with our team. I'm already thinking about next year's audit. I mean, we finish up and they're like, alright, let's get ready for the next one. So we are, we are, you know, we, we listen to these material weaknesses, we adhere to them. I always say I have a, a healthy respect for the audit, I have a healthy fear of the audit too. I mean, that's what drives us every day. And, you know, we have a great team in the financial department, but we had some changes. But our biggest hurdle is, is learning Skyward and, and getting there. So we are, we're, we're improving, we're getting better every day. And I want to thank Whitley, they were, I think we had a great relationship this year, and we just learned what we need from them and what they need from us. And as, as Michelle mentioned, the, the leases, that accounting standard has changed. And so we went into a strong contract with them, and they'll be taking over the leases. The way we recognize all that information is complex, and, you know, Michelle is an expert at it, so we hope to provide improvement every year. And I'm pleased we were able to increase our fund balance, and, you know, I, and, and what Michelle said about the bonds, so we recognized that 31 million bond that a year ago, so you'll always see a negative, because we're starting to spend that money now for our project, right, for our new building, so that will always be in the negative. And so we, we did it. That's all I gotta say, we did it. And I'm always available for help, and Simone calls me whenever she, she has questions. So I do, I have audit questions often, people ask if we can do this and that, and I always clear everything with audit, so.
And I want to thank Whitley for all they do for our district and helping us, you know, work through these issues and, and doing this for us annually. My questions for you, Simone, and maybe Superintendent May, is because when I look at, and maybe others too, look at a general fund unassigned balance of 5.5 million, are these resources we can and maybe should be using to fill it in some of the needs across the district, whether it's beginning or elementary school, those resources?
Yeah, because that's really a board and managing. Yeah, so the, the board has made a commitment to keep 8% of our fund in an unassigned fund balance, so it's like our savings account. Yeah, we're at a little over 4. I had said earlier, we, we're not at 8. So ideally, I know prior, previous CFO Erickson was always striving for that 10 million dollar number, and so we are driving it up, and that's why I'm very pleased that we were able to increase it by 1.7 million, but of course, we had help with ESR, you know, the last year, this year, and next year. So that is a board policy goal, is for us to get that up to 8%. I did the math today, it's like 4.59 or something, so we're getting there, okay? The district has made a commitment to that. The assistant superintendent and superintendent have made a commitment to keep working on those numbers and being respectful of the budget. So this is a huge district, and we are, we're, we have a lot of moving parts too, as Michelle said, so our goal is to lead it that way.
And, but, and this also has an impact on our bond, right?
Absolutely, yes.
But that being said, is that 5.5, is some of that going into the increase to our 4.59, some of that, 5.5 unassigned?
What's the 4.5? Yes, that's so.
4.59 is, is what we're at right now.
That is correct, yes. So that's part of our, our overall general budget. The unassigned of, it's at 5.6 million now, right? So last year was 3.8, and you can, you know, thank all of you for doing that work for the last three years, you know, driving that number up. And every year, the board has a commitment, I understand, to do at least a half a million dollars into that unassigned fund balance.
I believe Member Ashol has been waiting for a question, and then I put on the table.
Thank you, Superintendent. Most of my questions just has been answered, and I was going to ask about, you know, making sure that the 5.5 million was our, our reserve fund balance, and that, you know, I'm very pleased that it's, that it, the trend is definitely going upward. You know, having been on the board for a long time when we were, you know, near zero or almost, you know, almost negative, and being able to say that we have 5.5 million dollars saved now is, is an accomplishment for, for all of us. And thank you, Simone, for, for pointing out exactly how significant that is. Yes, I, to address Member Sandholm's concerns, the district does have needs, and we always will have needs, but we also need to watch our credit ratings and be responsible with our money in order to create money too. So it, it's, it's always a give and take. Yes, we have the money, we could spend it down to zero, but what does that cost us too? And that's a struggle that we as a board have to address each, with each of our spending decisions. But I, I thank you for, for being aware of that resolution, to be as close to 8% as we possibly can, and that we were driving, we're driving the bus towards 8%. I, I can't feel better about this unless it was at 8%, but I'm, I'm very pleased at what it is right now. Thank you.
And I would say, remembering that, that when, when the board set goals for me this year, one of the goals was budget development and maintenance, engaging in timely planning and actions that consider current long-range information, data, seeking to balance student needs and current future needs, and be financially responsible to the community and distribute resources. So we also, as a district, have set one of our, our strategic directions this year around financial transparency and making sure that, that budgets, as we are going through the process of moving away from ESR and as we're, we're moving forward in other directions, to really make things as transparent as possible. But I think that is admirable, that Executive Director Zunich has, has made our audit process more of a forensic audit than a, than a compliance audit, which really keeps it to a deeper level and really helps us expose exactly where we're at, and it's, it's really good to hear that, that we're making progress as, as an organization from, from that standpoint. And then also to, to address Member Sandholm's question too, there are some things that we're doing in addition to this to make sure that we're addressing student need as well. So the ESR spending that we're doing, just as a, for instance, there was about $2 million that was going to go towards technology replacement and purchase needs that, that were, were, that was going to come out of our ESR spending, but instead, we're going to be using some of the, the capital fund that is there from the sale of Historical Central. So what we're doing instead is putting that $2 million towards keeping about approximately half of our ESR positions, so keeping a lot of the interventionists and positions like them that, that were set to end at the end of this year. We're keeping roughly half of those positions because the needs are still there. We also want to make sure from a financial standpoint that we are working very, very hard in our lobbying efforts, and those efforts really need to be strong, and I know that we're meeting with our, our local representatives on Thursday in a work session. But we've been together with, with a number of different state organizations, as well as Education Minnesota and our, our local teachers' union and other unions to make sure that our lobbying efforts related to the funding with 17.9 billion dollars worth of budget surplus on the table, that is something that we're hoping for, significant change that will help us with our financial picture as well. So I'm very pleased at the direction we're going, but I just wanted to kind of connect the dots on, on a couple of things there too.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle, again. On page three on the auditor results, I just wondered if you could explain a little bit more about the, the last one, non-compliance with Minnesota statutes tested, like, how do you review that?
Well, there's, I'm running late, I want to say seven, there might be eight. Things that, under the Minnesota statutes, we were required to look at, was your, your cash and your deposits, looking at, making sure they're insured, we're looking at your bonds, we're looking at all of your contracts, we do extensive contract testing, we look at other miscellaneous items, so there's, there's checklists of things that we actually have to go through and look at to make sure that the district is complying with those items.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Seeing no other questions, we just again want to thank you, and then we know that you have another meeting to go to, so hopefully you'll get there.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. That brings us to public comment, and so I, I know that we will have some, and so, Executive Secretary Petten can bring that chart up for me. Thank you again. Usually we get to public comment a little bit earlier, but we thank you for being here as well, and hopefully you found all of the things we, we do get to, to learn at our meetings informational, and, and you would always know a little bit more about what we do at School Board, the truth in taxation, and then our audit report. So that being said, Member Paquette.
I'm here.
Okay.
Do we want to?
You've been in the Larnes folder?
It's not in here. It's in the Larnes folder.
So before we start, we always really encourage our community to come in and talk with us, and just a couple of reminders too, that we will review the civility rules, and I'll ask Member Lachlan Kim.
Community vision and priorities for Duluth schools, we will build on our shared beliefs and values of unity, high achievement, and responsible use of resources to create Duluth public schools and classrooms that are supportive, safe, supportive, and inclusive. We will work to inspire every student to achieve their potential and prepare students to lead productive, fulfilling lives as citizens of Duluth and the wider world. This school recognizes 11 tools of civility that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. And these are with, from the Speaker Peace Civility Project with the Duluth Superior Community Foundation. These tools include, one, pay attention, two, listen, three, be inclusive, four, don't gossip, five, show respect, six, be agreeable, seven, apologize, eight, given, give constructive criticism, nine, take responsibility, 10, be honest and care for others, and 11, show your evidence, share your reasoning.
Thank you. And then, a member, Sedelski, is our, our clerk this set, this meeting, and she will read just general public comment guidelines, and these are located on our, our website as well.
The public comment portion of the meeting is for the school board to listen to community members. Opinions, ideas contributed by students, parents, staff, and other citizens are valuable to the school board. The board will receive such input without comment to any items brought forth. The board may direct the superintendent of schools to consider such an item at an appropriate place on the agenda. This isn't what we normally meet, but.
No, listen, yeah, I thought, I thought it gave us like the two-minute warning and all that.
But I, I can, yeah, I can do that. So basically, you should sign up for public comment before the board reading, and Member Lowfall has the list, although if you didn't sign up and want to, we will take your name at the end of these comments. You'll have three minutes to speak, so once you come up here and introduce yourself, I'll just hit start. It'll be green, yellow, and then when it's red, that's when you should stop. And we try to give a few flex seconds for you to finish it up, so that's pretty much that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So we have, it looks like we have five community members signed up, and our first community member is Carol Donahue, and, and then she's followed by Mike Donahue is on deck. So our public comment people can either stand at the table, they can sit at the table, and we are glad you're here.
Okay, the three of us will go to the table.
Okay. Oh yeah, you can all sit at the table, you're all, it goes Carol, Mike, and then Janet?
Janet, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, hello.
Hi, Carol.
I am Carol Donahue, a Denfeld graduate of 1965. In 1964, 65, I was fortunate to be the school organist playing the 1920s George Gilden and Sons pipe organ for school assemblies and for the 1965 graduate class. This organ inspired me to become a church and performing organist. I have university degrees in elementary, education, music, and organ performance. Now, I'm chair of the Denfeld Historic Restoration and Preservation Alliance, Dorpa. A little over a year ago, one of my former organ professors, Dr. Jesse Ashkaw from the University of North Texas, and I decided to meet in Denfeld at the auditorium to see and play the pipe organ, but to our disappointment, the instrument was unplayable. Later at lunch, he asked me, "Well, what are you going to do about it?" My response was, "We could lay groundwork for the pipe organ's restoration." We now have a group of engaged people who have formed a committee with a board of directors and advisors. Dorpa is now a Minnesota nonprofit organization, corporation, and IRS-approved 501(c)(3) tax-exempt organization. Our focus is not just on the instrument, but the impact it will have on Denfeld, for the community of Duluth and beyond, and educational adults, opportunities for young and old. The construction and restoration of the pipe organ requires skills in design, engineering, craftsmanship, woodworking, metalwork, electrical work, music history, and the physics of sound. These are lessons that high school students and college students and adults can learn through workshops and classroom study in industrial arts, music, math, and science. We envision many learning partnership opportunities. Dorpa's goal is to raise enough funds for the complete restoration and preservation of the one-of-a-kind historical musical instrument. We were recently awarded a grant by the Minnesota Historical Society to completely assess the condition of the organ and prepare a treatment plan with a total cost estimate for its full restoration. The assessment will be coordinated with the district and Denfeld's engineering staff for January 2023. Tonight's visit is, is to inform you of the school district, or to inform the school district of our plan, and for you to consider Dorpa as a responsible nonprofit financial entity prepared to restore and prepare the Denfeld Auditorium organ for many more years of concerts, programs, and entertainment in the Duluth community and beyond. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Mike Donahue.
Yes, I'm Mike, and we are spouses. High school sweethearts. Class is 64, so I'm, I'm the oldest. I also serve as secretary for Dorpa, and I'm a retired educator of 53 years. And I'm reading a, a statement by our organ advisor, David Rollin, who has worked with a local maker of custom pipe organs since 1984. He's, he's been designing, building, installing, tuning, and maintaining pipe organs. He titled his narratives, "Duluth's Hidden Treasure: An Organ Builder's View." In the auditorium of Denfeld High School in Duluth, there's a hidden treasure, a genuine pipe organ. Most people may not be aware, it is there since the pipes are out of sight, behind a grill work on both sides of the stage and in the balcony. a grill work on both sides of the stage and in the balcony. Behind those grills are several large rooms housing an estimated one thousand nine hundred pipes, ranging in size from less than a pencil to over sixteen feet tall. All the sounds come from wind-blown pipes and real percussive instruments. There are no speakers. The only thing visible of this organ is the console where the organist plays the keyboards and the pedalboard and manipulates the stop controls. And that console has been hidden by a custom cover for years. The organ has been silent for many years because of damage to the roof of the auditorium and worn-out components. But this instrument is deserving a restoration. Just as we value and restore historic architecture of many different styles, we also should value and restore this historic organ. There are many pipe organs in area churches, but this organ is unique in being designed for a concert hall and located in a public, non-religious space. When this organ was originally built, it was common for concert halls and municipal auditoriums to have pipe organs. Many were also installed in schools as at Denfeld. They were used in combination with symphony orchestras, other musical groups, accompanying choirs, entertaining crowds by playing popular music, and accompanying silent films. Many of these civic organs have been removed from their original auditoriums as uses for these halls have changed. Many of these civic organs are, they've also been tonally altered as musical tastes have changed, and they no longer speak with the same original voice. The Denfeld organ remains totally as it was built by the respective firm George Hilton and Sons of St. Louis. It is both a valuable time capsule of its era and a versatile musical asset for use now and into the future. In recent years, there have been several new organs built in concert halls in North America, and their value is rediscovered. Notable examples are in Dallas, Philadelphia, and Edmonton. We have one here that is just waiting to be rediscovered and put to use. I've had the opportunity to go through the Denfeld organ, including the blower room and all the chambers where the organ pipes are installed. Although the organ needs work to make it sing again, the pipes, windchests, and wind system are of good quality and capable of being restored to the original condition. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janet Blix.
Hi, everybody. I'm Janet Blix, and I want to say as a Duluth homeowner, I was pleased to learn about the levies going on and where my tax dollars are going, as well as some of the marvelous program going on here at East High School. This has just been fun to be here and get a, a depth of what the school board does. So thank you for your work. I'm an advisor to the Dorpa group. My background is fundraising and marketing communications. I was the board president at Sacred Heart Music Center for about ten years and helped to rescue that building and organ from being destroyed a second time. And I've recently retired from Lake Superior College as a, as a public information professor, professional. I'd like to say a few things about why bringing this instrument back to life is, um, will benefit the Duluth community and beyond. But at the same time, I, I want to be clear that we, we recognize and understand the challenge to make people care about this instrument, you know, not just to financially contribute to it, to, to understand why, why is this, why is this a worthwhile project and endeavor? I'm gonna have to put my glasses on now. As Carol Donahue has mentioned, this one-of-a-kind instrument is part of a larger whole, and that's the beautifully restored Denfeld Auditorium. And that, that auditorium has served for years as a public gathering space, as well as a teaching and performance space for the students at Denfeld in theater and music, as well as um, graduation. I wanted to say something about the neighborhood that Denfeld is in because, you know, you've seen a, a, a big revitalization in commerce and in housing out in the Spirit Valley neighborhood. Um, and you see other popular venues for performing arts such as Wusso's Concert Cafe and the West Theater. And I really think that Denfeld, this is a public auditorium, it, it is, is part of that whole and part of that Renaissance. The grant that we got from Minnesota Historical Society, um, really is an important confirmation of what we're doing. And that grant recognizes that this instrument in this building is one of two in the state of Minnesota. The other, as was mentioned before, is in the Hibbing High School up on the range, which is another beautiful, beautiful auditorium. If you haven't been there, it's, it's a stunning space. To, to, to restore the organ in Denfeld would really complete the work that was started with the restoration of the Denfeld Auditorium that was completed in two thousand and seven. So our next step for the organ is for the organ to have its physical, that's what I call it, and really assess all its systems. We plan to develop about a five-year marketing and fundraising campaign that will be informed by the results of this organ assessment. That work is going to be completed by Foley Baker. Foley Baker is a nationally recognized organ builder and restorer. They restored the Aeolian Skinner organ in Northrop Auditorium at the University of Minnesota. So this is, they're, they're a big deal and they're very interested in this project. And this is what the MHS grant is going to fund. Our goal is to have the organ restored in time to celebrate the hundredth anniversary of its installation and the opening of the Denfeld Orth Auditorium in June twenty twenty-seven. So thank you for your time and your interest.
Our next speaker is Jenna Amundson, and after Jenna is May.
And you said my last name correctly. Thank you. Can I start from over?
Are you ready?
Okay. I'm Jenna Amundson. I've been teaching at Piedmont Elementary for almost a decade. I want to share my experience from this school year and how when everything we know to be best practice in the elementary setting is put into place, a classroom can thrive successfully. A little background about our school. We are a Title I school in the Piedmont neighborhood, and we house Northwoods School-Based Intensive Day Treatment Program. Northwoods is a program for kids with emotional and/or behavioral struggles who receive mental health and therapeutic services within the school day. Every year is a struggle to meet both the social, emotional, and academic needs of all my students. My first year, I had a split class of twenty-nine students, and my smallest class until this year was twenty-one first graders. This year, I have sixteen first graders. And out of sixteen students, I have eight that received special education services. Fifty percent of my students need additional support outside of the general education classroom. If this were a year that I had twenty-one or more students, I would be struggling daily to meet their needs. But today I want to tell you about just one of my students, and I want to preface this with I have permission and support and encouragement from this child's parent. My student this year had so many emotional and behavioral struggles last year in kindergarten that they could only attend school half-days, and they were deemed too violent for even our Northwoods program. They were being pulled out of the classroom multiple times a day to keep both themselves and their classmates safe. They were spending valuable academic time in the office instead of in the classroom with the proper support. Fast forward to first grade. This student started this year with full-time parent support, um, as well as receiving special education and social work services for academics and social emotional skills. I was told to keep a walkie-talkie on my person at all times for when I inevitably needed backup. I can't imagine starting our school year without the support in place as their previous teacher went their entire kindergarten year without. But as I said before, I only have sixteen students this year. I was able to focus my time and energy on creating and fostering positive relationships in my classroom and specifically with this student and their family. I was able to build and implement a consistent routine based on school-wide and classroom expectations. And since October, this student has needed zero parent support. Zero. They are in school daily, all day, and are only pulled out for additional academic services and social emotional skills. We have mutual trust and respect within our classroom, and they still have additional adult support through school, social workers, and special education teachers, but they don't miss a day, and they are thriving. I tell you all of this because my classroom this year is proof that when you combine small class sizes with the adequate social, emotional, mental health support, the students can thrive. The teacher and student and the class as a whole can succeed. I am able to meet with every student every day. This does not cure all learning disabilities. This does not solve all of the trauma our students are coming to us with, but we are able to meet the needs of the whole child when we are afforded more teachers to reduce class sizes for better instruction, student achievement, and parent involvement. And I want to share this positive testimony with you all to keep in the forefront of your minds as we enter teacher negotiations soon. Class sizes paired with parent and mental health support make all the difference. Thank you.
And our final speaker is May Sandberg.
Hello Superintendent Magas and school board. My name is May Sandberg and I was sixth grader at Rodine East Middle School. I want to be a mathematician and study viruses, cancer, and the making of vaccines. I love reading, and that is one thing I was sad and unsure about in middle school. We would not have a library specialist, although we would have a librarian. I realized we could go to the library if we had free time, and I was happy. But of course, I couldn't go to the libraries on Tuesdays and Thursdays, though I didn't know this. When I finally figured it out, I was sad, but managed to fit this into my schedule by going during Wynn on Mondays and Wednesdays. But I'm a fast reader and stop up on books, buy books at a time. I'm reading a series right now, and the series is very popular, so sometimes I don't get five books a year, three. Then let's say I finish them on a Wednesday and then on a Monday night. If this happened, happens, which it has, I'm stuck without a book. Today was one of those days. I've asked one of my friends, who doesn't like middle school very much, and they said that the library being open every day is a very good idea. Rodine East is one of the largest schools in the district and should have one or more full-time librarians. We have gym every two days, yet some kids have only gone to their library in their free time twice. Of course, why shouldn't we? Half the time I go to the library, the class I'm in offers free time on Chromebooks or board game time. And plus, we only have seven minutes to go to the library on Smart Pass, and with only two passes a day, why waste one? In closing, every school should have a full-time librarian, and Rodine East should have at least one full-time librarian. Thank you.
Are they, are there any others that would like to speak to the school board? Again, we thank you all for coming and sharing your ideas and your passions with members of the school board. Thank you very much. That brings us to number eight, school board members on our agenda. It is reading, communications, and petitions. We did have one. We had a letter from Carol Donahue that was sent to us in snail mail, and it is about on the historical organ restoration. It was loaded onto Board Book, and again, she shared with us many of the same things in the letter today. So that's, that was our agenda number eight. That moves us to um, number nine, the report of the superintendent. And so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Magas.
Sure, thank you. And I was just reading an update from student representative Crawford, who said that she was not able to join the meeting, but I'm going to see if she's, she's able to as well. Because as, as we normally do, we start with our, our superintendent's report, with our reports from our student representatives. And this is actually our final meeting of our student representatives from this year. We'll, we'll have new student representatives, but Ms. Knox, if you want to start with your report, that would be excellent.
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Roger Greenlaw today. So everyone enjoyed their snow days last week, and hopefully all stayed safe. They did cause slight complications in our winter week planning for this week. We intended to have a decorating party last Friday. So we're a little less decorated for the winter festivities than we normally would be. We tried to make up for it at Exec and Association on Monday morning. We came in and made some decorations, cut some paper snowflakes, that kind of thing. We had pajama day on Monday. Today was candy cane day, so red and white stripes or something of that sort. Tomorrow is winter sports day, and Thursday is ugly sweater day. East really loves the simplicity and fun nostalgia of winter week. Harvest was last month, and it was a very fun time. Students loved getting dressed up and going to a fun location for a dance. Many students also really enjoyed the photo booths and the nicer accommodations of having a venue. It was really fun to finally have it back. The holiday concert was this past Saturday, and it was a great event as always with wonderful music. The Duluth East debate team scored second place in the team sweepstakes for both debate and Congress, and will be sending four students to the National Speech and Debate Tournament in Phoenix, Arizona in June. So that was, they competed at St. Francis High School, and it was Azalea Steps, excuse me if I get their names wrong, Emily Menze, Jennifer Kelly Swing, and Lauren Deezee were the four that qualified for state. We had honorable, honorable mentions of Nathan Miccell and Sarah Chun that advanced, advanced to the final rounds. They've worked really hard since August in research, argumentation, and speech skills on a variety of topics, foreign and domestic, and we're very proud of them. Our boys and, our boys hockey and basketball both have games tonight. Hockey against Andover, basketball here against Grand Rapids, and there was also a Nordic ski meet today. So since this is my last meeting with you all, I thought I would give you a little feedback on my position. I've loved being student rep for East. It's been a really great experience, and I think I've grown a lot from it. One area I think could be improved is the balance of communication. So East wants its students' voices to be heard, and while I do believe that they are, it's hard to tell when communication feels a little bit one-sided. I've asked for feedback on different occasions on, or any advice you may have on different issues, and I've never received a response. And I know that that's not really how school board meetings work, but it, as in email or whatever. So even when there isn't much you all can do, I would hope that for future student reps, they could have closures on topics that they bring up. That being said, we have elected our new student representative this past month, and it is Elsa Priest won the election, and I think she will be a great addition to the board next year. So thank you all for a great experience. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And we do have a little recognition as well, but I believe we have a report from Soraya that Crawford, that Ms., okay?
So she's not going to join us?
She's not able to join us.
Okay, okay. So we did get Soraya's report, and so I'll just share it in the best Soraya way. So our holiday concert was last night, Monday, December nineteenth, and it was a great event in the Denfeld Auditorium that we heard about from our organ people. Scholarship wins, seniors are going to the Career Center during Wynn to learn about available scholarships and get help completing applications. There's been a twenty-one-day challenge introduced to staff at the last staff meeting, which focuses on listening, because students in various focus groups this year have identified that they are not being heard. This is a first step to better address equity in the school community. Our first-ever family feedback night was supposed to be last Wednesday night, December fourteenth, and it will be rescheduled in January. Our quarterly soaring Hunter's Event to recognize students going above and beyond with grades, attendance, and behavior was going to be attending the Black Panther Wakanda Forever movie in Canal last Thursday, December fifteen. But it will also be rescheduled in January. Denfeld was identified last spring to participate in the Voices Framework, which captures student voices of underrepresented youth culminating in a fifteen-minute documentary produced by Captivate Media. culminating in a 15-minute documentary produced by Captivate Media. The students' voices that are captured will form the basis for our professional development at Denfeld for the rest of the year during our monthly staff meetings. Our ACT registration is open and we are making the opportunity to take in school available to our juniors on March 28th. Our plant service class is having a plant sale along with some crafts this week through Wednesday, so tomorrow during lunches and for those last-minute gift shoppers. Speech season is getting ready to start and they have been hosting recruiting meetings. Before the break, Spirit Week features, before the break, Spirit Week features dress-up days like pajama day was Monday, New Year's Eve, ugly sweater day, and holiday movie character day, as well as lunchtime activities including hot cocoa and face painting, ball toss, trivia, and bean bag toss. Interested juniors and seniors attending the meeting during Wynn on December 6th to learn about local college options with reps from UWS, UMD, St. Scholastica, Lakeshire College, and Fond du Lac. We had several players from Fall Sports recognized on all area teams by the Duluth News Tribune, including Deshaun Moore in football, Alyssa Doyle in girls soccer. In addition to the whole girls soccer team, was awarded the Lake Superior Soccer Referee Association 2022 Team Sportsmanship Award. One of our senior captains, Ella Backstrom, was also chosen for the LSSRA 2022 Fair Play Scholarship, which is awarded to an athlete who demonstrates respect for opponents, referees, coaches. Ella will receive $1,000 to aid her with her post-secondary tuition. Congratulations, Denfeld Girls Soccer and Ella Backstrom. Our junior rotarians are working on our project to be funded by the Harvard Town Rotary. Stay tuned for more details on that. That concludes Soraya Crawford's report. I also know that Denfeld's student rep is being elected this week, so we'll get that name as well. And also, just as an addition, we are, you know, getting a student rep from our ALC and AEO high schools. So that will be a great addition. We'll have to add a table to our group tonight and that will be great. So thank you.
Great. And I just want to say thank you and thank you for so much of your leadership. Thank you for giving your suggestions here and helping improve the process. I think that that's great. And we do have a little thank you, which is a Duluth Public Schools shirt and we have one for Soraya Crawford as well, as well as a plaque. And so maybe we can have a quick little picture. Maybe, right here is good. And we're glad to write flowing letters of recommendation for any college that you'd like to thank.
Thanks. Thanks, Heidi.
So returning to the rest of the Superintendent's report. We just had our student representative reports. I'll have a very brief update. Our update tonight is a little more brief than general because we had our, the November holiday break and then I was out on a family vacation for a week. And then we also have had, you know, there hasn't been a lot of time since our last School Board meeting, actually. But we do have an update on strategic planning, a little tiny snippet on elementary and secondary scheduling, as well as what we've been doing with community and school outreach. So regarding our strategic planning update, since we met last time, we had a meeting on November 7, 16th, the day after our School Board meeting, where our strategic planning team worked on refining our desired daily experiences as well as the theory of action plan, as well as continued development of that action card and the three-year operational plan. The team will be meeting right after break on January 4th to finalize the draft of the district vision card and also the draft of the three-year operation plan and also to make sure that we have our key messages in place at that time. Our School Board, as you know, we had some activities and things that we were starting on during our committee of the whole, but we decided that we wanted to spend some time in a workshop setting. Thought it would be more appropriate and I agree with that. And so on January 26th, we're going to be working on our district mission, core values, and vision, as well as that operational plan and just making sure that we have all of that work with our board plan in place. As far as our secondary and elementary scheduling updates, as you know, we have two different committees that have been working hard for quite some time on the elementary and scheduling options. We currently have paused on making changes in the secondary schedule, as I noted at our last meeting, for the 23-24 school year. So we aren't moving forward with a major schedule change for the secondary for the 23-24 school year. But we do need to continue that work. It's not that the work is stopped, it's that the change is paused, that we can go deeper with the work. And then the elementary eight-day rotation work is continuing with that group and we're working really closely with the teachers on those committees as well as the DFT as a whole related to those two changes because they would require some contractual language changes or MOUs that would need to be worked on. And so we want to make sure that we're doing things in conjunction and really that they're seen as beneficial for all. So I would say that we're still optimistic that we might have some change for the elementary schedule for this year with some change in the eight-day rotation. But we'll be sharing more as that continues to develop and I look forward to sharing more in the new year. As far as community and schools outreach, had some great times in our schools over the course of the past few weeks. I was at the Denfeld concert as well as the, last night, as well as the East concert this weekend. Lakewood had a nice holiday concert as well on Monday that I took part in, as well as general visits from school to school. I also had a flat tire in the Condon parking lot today. So I spent some time at Condon while I was waiting for AAA to come. But it was kind of an odd coincidence. But I certainly have been trying to spend a lot of time in the schools, more so out of intention than car issues. But as far as my other main commitment this year is really to get out and spend time in our communities. And we spent time last night out on Park Point at the Lafayette Community Center and we were also at the Harrison Community Center and Portland Community Center. So each of those areas have been areas that we've been focusing on and working on together. And prior to our next School Board meeting, we have a scheduled session at Homecroft Elementary. So, but that will need to be changed because we have our MSBA State Conference and we have our pre-session starting that day. So Adele is working to reschedule that meeting. And that concludes my Superintendent's report. There's a lot of, I would say that there are many other things that could be included. We're doing great work through our Cabinet Plus team and I look forward to more robust updates in the 23 school year, or 23 calendar year, I should say. Any questions?
None really. Just thank you for, you know, touching base. I think the things that you selected to give us some updates on are the major things we've focused on our strategic plan and the continued work there. And, you know, we have, not, you know, we, you know, secondary and elementary, secondary and elementary schedules is a big chunk and I'm glad to, we're glad to get reports on that. I do give you just a push to continue that elementary eight-day rotation. It does seem to have been an issue over the years and so the fact that you have a committee working on it is great.
We are hopeful and I know that Director Sparts is really hoping it will come to fruition. I know that there's some hesitancy as far as like, should we do it this year or next based on the part of some staff that are just, they want to make sure that it's not pushing too hard, too fast. But I think that there are, for the most part, it's largely something that the elementary teachers are finding positive. There are some impacts with physical education and a couple of other things that are not seen as positive. So I think we're really trying to work to make sure that we're listening carefully to the needs of our teachers and what they're hoping for, as well as thinking about the needs of the students. So we hope it will happen.
Did I hear you right that, you know, you're hopeful that there could be a change yet this school year between January and June or next fall?
That it would be ready for next fall.
Thank you.
And I have to step out for 30 seconds to talk to my mechanic to see if my car is ready tonight or not, so.
And then looking at our agenda, 9C is just the schedule of meetings and events and because it is the end of December and it's the holiday, there's nothing except for we do have this Thursday opportunity to meet with legislators at 12 o'clock to 12:30? Noon, yeah, at the United Healthcare Building. Next on our agenda then is number 10. And just a reminder that January 3rd, so just right after the holiday, we have our annual organizational meeting, the January 3rd, and then we turn right around and have a committee of the whole meeting on January 6th. Looking at 10, reporting of the standing committees. The first report is Committee of the Whole and I'll turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Bonds for just a quick review of our Committee of the Whole meeting this past month.
Thank you. And that meeting was held on the 6th of December and it covered three items. And over the US, as the superintendent has already shared, there's a strategic planning update provided by Ray Kreener, who is the CEO and personal consultant. He provided the board with some insight on next steps regarding strategic planning. And that was, I think, a very informative conversation and update. The next presentation was given by the Managing Director of Baird Public Finance. It was titled Duluth Public Schools Planning for Our Operational Future was the discussion at that point. And a update regarding the district's legislature platform was the other topic that was discussed at that point in time. And it was a really detailed and thoughtful conversation around those areas and that was the entire Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Any questions or reflections back on the Committee of the Whole? It was an informational, many page, or many slide PowerPoints, both from Baird and from Team Works and also from Jeff Anderson on our legislative platform. Again, we think that the Committee of the Whole meetings is really a place there's a lot of information given at those. So thank you. Moving to 10B, the HR Business Service Committee. I'll turn it over to Chair Eater for a review of that meeting.
Great, thank you. So we met as a committee on Tuesday, December 13th and we got started pretty close to on time at 4:30. For this meeting, we had a guest presentation from the city of Duluth on our Safe Route to School on a grant application. You can refer, really what the city came in was to talk about some work that they're going to complete in 2023. This is going to be, this is funded and this has to do with Lincoln Park with a small area that is going to be helpful in connecting a walking path or a path for students coming from lower Lincoln Park to get up to Lincoln Park. We are working on getting the attachments from the city to put up on Board Book, but so far we haven't read those, gotten those attachments. But those attachments include this beautiful little picture of the area where that work is going to be done along with exactly what is going to be done. There is going to be a community meeting on this work for the Lincoln Park neighborhood on Thursday, January 5th at 5:30 and that will be at Lincoln Park. In addition to that already funded Safe Route to School work that will be completed for Lincoln Park, there was a presentation that will be related to a recommended resolution that has to do with the Resolution of Support for Transportation Alternative Grant for Campus Connector Segment 6 to provide improvements to the intersection of East Superior Street and Condon Park Drive in the city of Duluth. There was some, an attachment C that shows exactly sort of what area that the city is working on to get this federal grant in addition to what this curb extension, some curb extension and some other work done for the Condon Park School. What the city is asking us to do is to pass a resolution that will give credence and strength to this federal transportation, this federal transportation alternative grant that will go through 2026. So they did a great presentation on that and then also updated us on some other, sorry, I need the mic. On some other information on Safe Route to School. There's a couple of schools that the city of Duluth brought out. Stowe, they're looking at asking for a bike rack for Stowe and then also updating their Safe Route to School plan. Homecroft needs a Safe Route to School, so there's some work to be done with Homecroft. And then in addition, Ordene East Middle School also needs to work on their Safe Route to School as well. During that meeting, we did talk about the need for Piedmont Elementary in front of Chambersburg. Once you get past Piedmont Elementary, the sidewalks end as you go from Chambersburg to Anderson and there's no really safe place for kids to walk in the winter. They walk up on top of snowbanks and that's if the city had come and cut the snowbanks down so the kids can walk on top of the snowbank. And one of those kids happens to be mine, so it's kind of close to home. We are working with the city again to get these attachments and when we do get the attachments from the city, we'll make sure to get those attached to Board Book. So if you have any questions or would like to see this information in the other board members, please come and look. All right. Any questions on the Safe Route to School stuff? We're good?
No, just really glad the city came and, you know, and really is working with us to do these one at a time or as many as they can get a grant for.
They were just awesome to talk.
Did they get the, didn't they ask for parents to write letters?
Yep, they're working with the Condon, with parents from Condon to write some letters of support for this grant that they're working on. But really what's going to be hugely important is the resolution that we hopefully will pass. And then they're also working with Mr. Spooner to get some support from Mr., a letter of support.
And that's why we have the resolution in our paper tonight.
Yep. Okay, so moving on. Next, when we had our departmental reports, Director Severance gave us our HR monthly departmental summary report. What is important is that January 1st deadline is coming up for our teachers to make sure that they give us their commitment to retirement. Is that correct?
February 1st.
February 1st, okay, I'm sorry.
You had to tell January 1st to get them their estimates.
That's right. So January 1st, we had to get our estimates to our teachers as to what their retirement would look like. And by February 1st, they need to give us their intent as to whether or not they're going to retire. And this we need to pay special attention to because this is an improvement in process that is going to allow us to post positions much sooner and have a easier time filling those positions that we're going to need. Of note as well, with our contract negotiations this evening, we will be looking at a resolution coming from our firemen and oilers bargaining unit. And one of the takeaways from that negotiation is that this will be a three-year contract. I always encourage you to come in and take a minute and look at the great HR report summary that Director Severance does. Next, did I miss anything, Director Severance? Are we good? Awesome. Okay, so next, we have a recommendation to recognize two new district holidays. And this is Martin Luther King Junior Day and the Juneteenth Holiday. With respect to our bargaining units, we need to approve a memorandum of understanding with the intent to start the recognition of these days as holiday holidays in 2023. And we are working on that currently. Great. So moving on from HR Business Services. We moved on to Business Services. We had just a verbal report from our finance department. Director Zunich, and this really had to do with waiting on the audit. The audit had been completed that day, you'd had it for like forty-five minutes or something, so we just talked about where we were at in the audit process. Um, next, we had our enrollment report, and of note for our enrollment report, right now, our projected ADM is at eighty-one hundred point six-two, which is above our budget projections of about one oh five, about one hun, about a hundred and six ADM. So, um, uh, my assumption is following graduations in December, where in December we'll see that ADM probably drop a little bit as students graduate early. So that was our enrollment report. I love seeing those enrollment numbers continue to hold steady and increase a little bit. Next, we had a child nutrition departmental report. Um, of note in this report was the Minnesota Health Department has completed round one of their two-year inspections of our kids' kitchens. Importantly, no issues were brought forth, good reviews at all the schools reinforces that our program employees and managers are putting food safety as their top priority. So that's always great to hear, and kudos to our child nutrition department. Next, we have our facilities management and capital project status report. Um, Mr. Spooner went over and talked about the number of, um, completed work orders. Our facilities department is working very, very hard. Some, um, updates on our capital construction project, our Denfeld clock tower is almost done. This fire and finial are, that's what's left to fabricate and install, and Mr. Spooner thought this would most likely happen in the spring when it's not um, a gajillion degrees below zero out. The Condon Park window replacement project is done, and the punch list was just created. If you look through some of the change orders, let me get where I'm at. Some of the change orders under miscellaneous, there were some change orders that had to do with, um, the Condon Park window project. This was expected, that there was some wood that needed to be replaced around some of the windows, they weren't able to estimate, to estimate that prior. And then of note, which is great news, is they were able to take the previously used shades, cut them down and fit them into the new window. So while we had a little bit increase with some change orders, we also, um, were able to save some money on the window shades. The new Denfeld bed bathroom construction is almost complete. And, uh, the FY twenty-four for our LTFM planning, the Condon playground construction is being designed, and we'll start bidding on that in early twenty twenty-three. And I believe Mr. Spooner said Condon was one of the elementaries that haven't had, that hasn't had some of that, um, equipment repaired or new equipment, so that's going to be huge for our little Spaller dot Condon. Um, maybe before I'm done with the school board, we will be done with PSS track lane one ponding remediation, but Mr. Spooner assured me that it's moving forward, so that's great. Construction on the hill is moving forward, um, and new central is currently being taken down at this time. Of note, um, for building operations, there are twenty-three vacancies in facilities operations, and they're working very, very hard to fill those positions. There's some other information on OSHA that, um, Mr. Spooner includes, and please feel free to look on Board Book. Moving forward to the technology departmental report that Bart did, you can go ahead and look to see the number of, um, how we're using Gmail and account information. Of note, um, as part of our, hold on, I just want to get this correct. Mr. Bond sent some information out to our staff earlier today. Um, in order to comply with our cybersecurity insurance policy, we have to train our staff on phishing. So our, um, technology department has been doing that, um, working with our staff to make sure that they're not going to be able to be fall for a phishing scam. So far, we've only had, we've had about thirty percent staff engagement on clicking on that phishing, so now we're in the educational part of this procedure to make sure that our staff are informed as to what phishing is. Um, and they are continuing to receive equipment for our DSC school board meeting space, which is really exciting. So that is our technology report. In our transportation report, um, what we have going on in our transportation report, as usual, staffing is a concern. November, we had sixty-five trips, so far in December, we had sixty-three scheduled. Um, Stephen Johnson, who was our Director of Transportation, his last day was last Friday, I believe. So, um, they are working on filling that position. We also have a gentleman, our mechanic, Jeremy Caspity?
Caspedis.
Caspedis, I knew I was going to get the syllable wrong. Um, was promoted to Assistant Manager, leaving us without a mechanic, but thankfully Voyager is going to help us with some minor mechanical maintenance, so we're very thankful to Voyager. Any other questions, please go ahead and refer to Board Book. There's some great information. Moving on to recommended resolutions, we have our certified tax levy today that we'll be looking at. We also have a resolution reestablishing precincts and polling places for our Duluth Public Schools. As noted earlier, we have a resolution of support for the Transportation Alternative Grant for Campus Connector Segment Six to provide improvements to intersection of East Superior Street and Condon Park Drive. We talked about this with our special presentation earlier. We have an authorized bank's, um, account signer. We also have acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. Also acceptance of grants awarded to the Duluth Public Schools. We then look at our HR staffing reports, and we have in addition of a job description. And let me just get to where I'm going. So this will be a new position, and Simone, would you mind just explaining a little bit about this position? Um, what we're doing with this position and sort of what we're thinking about for the future?
Um, as we all know, our Mars Coordinator is leaving, and, um, we wish her the best. She's, does an amazing job. Um, so we are filling her position as a Mars Coordinator, uh, to backfill that position, but we anticipate with the changes at MDE with EDBI, it's going to become, uh, an analytical position, and we want to have this in place. So who we hire, we want to be able to graduate to that next position. It's going to become critical. Um, I had a good conversation with MDE last Friday night, um, about this, and for this, and it, um, is they're overhauling Mars and the way they're reporting, so it's critical that we have something in place for future, uh, assignment. And, uh, we came up with this great job description, and we hope you approve it.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
But right now, we're filling the current Mars position, and this is a job description, and it's going to be, uh, a job that is, that we anticipate we're going to hire, but right now, we're not putting it out there for hire. Yeah, I, that's what I got from listening.
Yep. All right, so as we move on to our consent, uh, no, we just did the HR staffing report. Um, as we move on to finances, you can see on page twenty-five, you can look at our financial report, and as usual, of note is, um, where our Financial Director has taken time to break out our Esther Free Funds, our Building Construction Funds, and then our Extracurricular Funds, so we can sort of see a breakdown um, of what those funds look like. Moving on to fundraisers, this will be part of our consent agenda. Looks like a lot of kids homecroft trying to get to Wolf Ridge, which is always exciting. Um, under number four, our bids, RFPs and quotes, we have a quote for a data center co-localization services. You can see this on page twenty-seven. This is the only bid that we have had for this data center co-localization services. And you can see that we expect, um, a five-year cost will be less, uh, should be around two hundred thousand, but need to award this bid for the maximum amount of five hundred thirty-four. Uh, about five hundred thirty-four thousand, about four hundred and eighty. Um, you can see the price breakdown on the back of this page.
So can you explain what that is? Is, is Bart, is that Bart? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see you back there, Bart. Oh, I'm so glad you're here to explain this. Thank you, Bart.
I wouldn't have asked it had I not said that, because I listened to it on the thing, and I was like, I don't know.
So for the co-location, uh, currently, we're using Paimboda, um, and that's.
What is co-location?
It is where our servers are, our data racks are, where the internet comes in, our phone lines come in. So we have two cabinets in there now. Uh, this bid is up to four cabinets, and it's up to twenty-four kilovolts of power. Uh, right now, we're using around five. Um, but if we were to put like, uh, additional servers, so if we put, uh, like video servers in there, or.
Is this in our new facility?
No, this is, uh, at the old Doerty Hardware building. That's where actually it is. So Ascenda's in there, uh, we're in there, and some other businesses are in there.
Okay, okay, now I'm starting to get with this.
So that is their, uh, one facility, and their other facility is actually right behind the UHD, where we're at. That's their higher tiered level one. Uh, but we've been in the one down at the old Doerty Hardware building for, I think it's going on ten years now. So this is our third bid.
Okay, I got you.
And this was the only bid we received.
It's the only bid we received. So we had some other interests of other vendors that were out of state, but we have to visit that probably once a week. So we didn't want anything that was out of town.
Yeah, that, okay, I got it. Thank you. I'm so glad. And as long as you're here, can I just, um, so the phishing, um, the phishing need and the, the education for staff. Um, I'm, I'm not a staff, so I don't think I've got some of the background, but I actually, you know, because I have an email, because I'm a coach, I, I got some phishing stuff, like I, I got a Holiday Inn email to confirm a lodging.
Yep.
And because I was going out of town with my team, I, I didn't think it was the hotel that I had made my reservation. So, but I did click in it, and I got this big phishing thing, and so I, I didn't know what to do with it.
Right, so the email, if you click on any of the, those emails, those phishing emails, it sends you, sends you to a training. It says, you know, hey, you clicked on this, your information wasn't shared, uh, but here's some training on how to identify it. So we always ask people, take a look where it's from. It may say, you know, Holiday Inn, but if you look at that email address, it's some weird address.
Okay, I didn't click on that. Maybe it did tell me, it did say something about submitting, so I submitted something.
So, TV, Bart, this is.
Maybe, maybe I did.
And that's how you get the training.
On the training, and then it told me to submit it as if like I did.
Well, it, it'll tell you if, you know, how to identify phishing emails, and then you go select it and drop down, drop down those and say, submit as a phishing email to identify it.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah, so in the email that people get sent, it says, in the future, here's how you identify a phishing email.
I gotcha. Okay, okay, thank you.
True, we're not alone. As a matter of fact, I'm responding to an email, um, to a staff member, because even the one that has the shout-out, um, that's one that also people were like, hey, that seems really personal, and she got really excited, uh, about that opportunity. But I too, because we're going to a conference, I think in February, I thought, um, Kayla had completed my registration, so I was about to open it. I'll be honest, the reason I didn't open it because it was during the snowstorm, and so I had emails pile up, so I'll get to that one later. It wasn't until today that I realized that, whoa, I didn't open that one up because I would have, thinking like, oh, she completed my registration. So it's, um, it's, it's a good reminder for all of us to just slow down just a little bit and make sure we pay attention to the emails and at least the, the things that make it real obvious that it's not a legitimate email, and there's something fishy about it. And so I want to let you know, you're not alone, and I just happened to not have clicked on it.
But, but I think I, I did, and then it said this is a phishing?
Right, that our InfoSec IQ services we have for doing this, will send the user an email with saying, hey, this was a phishing email test, you know, here's the training to go to, click on this training. And it's a short, two or three-minute video, tells you, saying, hey, look for this, and the, you know, where it's from.
Okay, okay.
You know, is this requiring urgent action from you? Is it something you, you know, did, you know, looked at it? Because they always wanted to, uh, have an urgency with it, so people like, oh, I won this, or I need to look at this, or I got a package. So people are always, or, you know, or your credit card has been denied. So they want you to click on it because it's like, oh, I need to look at that right away. So that's the first thing they want to do is have something urgent for you.
So when you said, when, when the report was that thirty-seven percent of our staff have been trained, does that mean?
Thirty, thirty-three percent roughly have clicked on it. So.
Which is good, I say, because then this is a way for us to train staff.
Yeah. So we did have some training in the beginning on Staff Development Day through Vector. Uh, one of the training was email security, um, but they found that if you don't take it on a regular basis once a year, it's not adequate. And thirty-three percent of our staff so far, it's not adequate.
But next year, it's a year old.
So when, when staff do, does that compromise our whole system or not?
These are just phishing emails that we are doing, uh, but if it was real phishing emails, uh, yes, it could. So three, roughly three years ago, four years ago, we had, uh, sixty staff give up their credentials. We had to shut our email system down. I spent almost a month sending out to all the people that they sent out to. So what it did is it sent, uh, emails saying, hey, you need to change your password. And it brought them to a site and says, oh, are you a Microsoft or are you Google? People selected Google, they put in their passwords, and all their accounts got compromised. So we had to actually shut our system down because so many staff were falling for it.
I think this is a great way.
Should we have this training too?
What's that?
Should we as Board members?
Uh, all, all, uh, at ISD someone I got on, staff will get phishing emails.
So this Holiday Inn one was really sent by our district to me as a phishing.
InfoSec, yeah, from InfoSec IQ, it was a phishing.
Okay, okay.
You do not get to go to the Holiday Inn, so, okay?
I feel like, why did you send me out to do this? Just a little bit of a big.
And we, and we had some people, it just happened to be their birthday, they received the Holiday Inn, or there'd be a gift card one. And they're like, oh, this is so great.
No.
Oh, no.
Not great.
And it's just, I mean, you know, we don't plan it, he just writes it and he sends it out to the, the staff.
Okay, okay. And, and are, is it done now, the phishing survey and, and the?
The campaign ended on, uh, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah.
But if you, people haven't gotten their emails, they'll still be looking at those emails, so.
Thank you for your diligence on this. I think this sounds like a great way to educate staff. If that were me, I'd be like, oh, thank goodness, it was just a test.
And we have to look at it, look at it just like a fire drill. We have to practice it, you know, and then you identify, it's like, oh, here's what I have to do, and here's where I need to go. So it's the same way, because there's always people knocking on our door to get in, you know, from foreign countries as opposed to locals.
And many organizations are doing that. I, I received, uh, an alert from my bank, uh, account, so, you know, you can watch your bank's senior account. It comes up right away saying, please be aware, there are scammers, you know, asking for personal information, they're phishing for your, you know, info, so just be mindful about this, that, or the other. And, um, and these, like I'm communicating to this person, that's the whole goal, is to make it, to make it look real personalized. And they try to get you to entice you, that's, that's the basic. And once you click, then you're, you're compromised. And thankfully, we're trying to, uh, our insurance is requiring us to really do it, and we're trying to, um, do it in a, in a way that does have individuals to click on it, but then it's, uh, it's a test, and then there's some education around it.
And importantly, this working and doing this work, um, allows us to not have astronomical increases in our insurance that has to do with our cybersecurity every year, so.
Cyber.
This is just really important. And it's okay then for this stuff to happen. I mean, you'd rather have it happen in a campaign like this than in real life, so.
Right, we had to actually open up our email to allow the InfoSec IQs to even get in, because they kept on, you know, saying, hey, this is phishing. And to say, okay, we have to exempt this one, because most of the email our system blocks. When I do the report, you'll see, you know, like a, a million emails received, a million, a million emails were blocked. So fifty percent of the emails that we receive are being blocked because there are, you know, phishing or malware or something. And that's per month.
Yeah, so one point three email messages accepted, hundred and thirty-one thousand were rejected, one point five million were identified as spam, one point six thousand were identified as phishing, and forty-five were identified as having a suspicious attachment. So, for the one part.
And I appreciate your report so much.
It's interesting.
I, I do like the addition of our technology.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate you. So as we move on, for four D, this is what, um, I was talking about earlier, the change order associated with St. Germain and the Condon Window Project. You can look on, on page twenty-nine. So the original contract sum of the work was five hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred twenty-two. The first change order, first change order was for a sum of sixty-eight thousand. Resulted in a new sum, um, so the total was at six hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred eight. We had an additional change order, which was related to the rotted wood, talking about going around the windows and then also, um, reusing the window shades. That was around nine thousand dollars. So the new contracted amount for the Condon Window Project was six, um, hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fifty-three. Um, and we were still about two hundred thousand. I think I have here under budget or under bid.
Underbid.
Underbid. Thank you.
And my question too about that is, the change order that's on Board Book, um, has, Board Chair is supposed to sign off on this, um, change order? And, and I, I wondered why the board, the chair, I mean, I, I get it, but you're the chair of this committee and you're the one at the Finance Committee meeting, accepting this from David Spooner. But you get when the change order letter is in Board Book, it says to Jill Lowfalk. And then I'm, I, I would imagine, Patty, do I have to sign off on that? And I just wondered why that was me instead of the Finance Chair when she's the one at the meeting.
Because you get the good.
Yeah.
You get the practice. All right, so now we move on for number five, miscellaneous informational. We have our district property updates. Um, you can look at that. We have some great pictures of our DSC building, and then also what's happening with our bus garage. So that's exciting. We also have a letter dated December fifth from, uh, where am I here? From Mr. Fulmer, talking about our eighth, um, our Central on the Hill property. As of right now, we have pending, but with continuing advertising, so that's great. Moving on next with our expenditure contracts. We have quite a few expenditure contracts. You can look, they start on page thirty-eight. And we have all of those expenditure contracts until page one ninety-three.
A lot of contracts.
Note for this is, um, one of our expenditure contracts is for front, frontline education. This is for finance. It's around a hundred thousand dollars. What is going to be, um, awesome about the purchase of this software is that it is going to allow us to do, um, five-year budget forecast modeling. And this is going to be hugely helpful when we think about long-term budget stability and what we think about how our budgets look long-term. So this is a really exciting addition to our finance department. Coming to page, hold on, I'm getting there. One ninety-three. Our no-cost contract. We have one from Arctic Wolf and then also Fond du Lac Band of Lake Superior Chippewa. Next, our revenue contract on page two oh one. Getting there. Northeast Service Corporation for Providing School Nursing Support to Northeastern Minnesota. And then the St. Louis County Youth in Action. Um, this is for getting students involved in school and community projects that make a positive impact. And then lastly, on two nineteen, we have our grant application. I'm getting there. Hold on. Millard Juan Foundation, um, for an adaptive training wheels and adaptive scooter for D A P E students. And then the Minnesota Department of Transportation. This is the Minnesota Safe Routes to School Grant for Condon Elementary. That is what we had in our H R Business Services meeting this month. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, yes.
I do. Thank you. I know it so much from tearing that committee in the past. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Um, I just, uh, I just want to make sure I'm not confused about the resolution we're going to be supporting in the amending resolution. Um, and so I'm not sure if this is why I should be asking this question about, uh, reestablishing precincts and polling places.
So the one, so on page, let me just get there quickly. So this, the resolution that I talked about under, um, recommended resolutions was the, what do we have here? Um, remember Lachlan Kemp? We have thirty-four and then plus the five, um, precincts in the townships. This resolution.
Yeah, so we have that one, and then we have, uh, where did the amended one go?
The amended one is...
Or the, yeah, the added one?
Yes, this resolution. That gives us, in the event of a special election, the condensed combined polling places, the post-five, like, correct, member law.
Yeah, so is this, is this, first of all, where you want me to ask the question?
I think you can ask it here.
Okay, okay. So, just so I'm clear, so the, the one resolution where this, all of the polling places, um...
I got my right here?
I'm sorry. Uh, that is just to affirm that, uh, these are the established polling places that we would use for school board elections that match the cities. Okay, so that's...
Because of the redistricting.
Right, right. So, um, because of the redistricting, these voting places were used already in August and September, so. Uh, so, or, uh, uh, November. So then the, the other resolution, the amended, uh, that is to combine in the case of, uh, a special election. Okay, what I'm confused about in it is it also said, uh, uh, not held on the day of a statewide election. So what if we had a special election that wasn't like, for example, this fall is going to be city races, but there's not state races? So...
So I've been looking into this. Apparently it has not passed before, but, um, I went into MSBA and looked at special elections for twenty twenty-three. And there is a series of calendars that there are different dates that don't align with a, a state election. Um, I, I wish I could give you better information on that. Um, it, you know, it's an insur- insurance to the district, um, to provide five polling places. I believe the numbers are four. Um, but I, I did some math, and if we were to provide a special day election, it would be over one hundred thousand dollars. And, um, so this, of course, I think has been promoted in the past, and it definitely would be a cost savings. And, um, the likelihood of it happening is, of course, always slim to none. But I, I think the board's previous hand, there was a reservations about it. I don't know what else to say. I wish I...
Okay, I just, so I just wanted to...
Other than I, I look at it from the finance side of it too, so it would be costly.
I, I won't speak on behalf of anybody else, but I, I know when this has came up before, some of my own concern as a, you know, and I've been an election judge as well, so I, I kind of, I come at it at that. Uh, perspective of wanting voters to have every opportunity to vote and not be confused about where they vote. And I think that's, has been, for me, the reason I haven't supported it in the past is because I, it's hard enough getting people to vote, and I think it would be very confusing. Even though this, the likelihood of it happening is slim, but, um, it could. And, and, and so I, I, I wanted to, I guess, just be clear that's what the intent of this was for again. I can't support that. I support this.
Yep, that, that one goes to, that needs to be signed, you know, approved before, for St. Louis County before the end of one. But yes, the other one, um, I think has been presented before, and we wanted to make sure I didn't see it again.
And I would just add a couple of things, that I just think that, uh, school races do not get enough attention anyways. And, 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 um, we need to make it as easy as it can to, for, for voters to go to their regular voting place and not be confused, um, so. I think, remember Lachlan Kemp's original question is kind of, uh, uh, could, could be something that we need to kind of recheck is, is that we crafted this resolution. I don't think it's an MSBA resolution. I don't think there... But it, when you say, um, in the very last sentence under number two, and it says, for all school districts, special and general elections not held on the same day as a statewide. And we do citywide, and talking to MSBA on this topic yesterday, you know, um, they were also, um, you know, Duluth is unique in the fact that we are on odd-year elections. And so he thought that it would be kind of slim chances of, of actually having to actually hold a special one. Because we, we generally have, you know, you know, we have one next November. So if for some reason we needed a special election between now and next November, you know, maybe there's a way we would delay it until next November when, when looking ahead for any special election. And this is not, the, the, the areas of special election would be if for some reason we, um, had to elect a, a new school board member for some reason that, that there was a vacancy. And, or, uh, uh, you know, MSBA said it happens with bonding and operating levy. And if anybody can speak to that that has more knowledge about why you would, wha... You know, it seems to me every time I've known our district, I have, we have the, we had the presentation for, you know, of when we, we had, uh, a levy in twenty eighteen, and we, we did it in November when we had a citywide election. So MSBA just thought that it, it would not be, uh, very often that we'd need one. But again, a hundred thousand, thousand dollars, if somehow we had to reappoint a board member in February, we, we might have to hold a special election.
Who is in charge of, like, staff? So if we have a special election for just the school board and we have, who is in charge of making sure that we have all of the?
Election judges, thirty-four, like, thirty-four precincts covered with, how many election judges per site? It can be six. I mean, there's a certain number. There's a, there's a, there's a method to it.
Yes.
You don't just randomly decide.
It can shift and...
But we would be, we would hire them all.
We would, yes.
You said that it would cost a hundred thousand dollars to hold it. How much would you save if you, if, if resolution passed?
Well, so I, when I, the information, as I dug into this today, the, the sample they, the example they provided is if the school board member is in a four-year term and they leave halfway through, there is an appointment, but then the next special election or next, next election, election would be in the fall. So, um, they said it could cost anywhere from three to thirty thousand dollars for a special election, depending on the size of your district. Well, if we have thirty-four polling places, you know, you just do the math, I do three thousand times thirty-four.
But that would be if it was in an at-large. If it was a district person, it would be maybe only seven precincts. So that would really vary.
It, it's really, it, it's a unique situation, and I, I wish I could provide more information, but that's...
Do we have to pass this tonight?
Before December thirty, we have to, we have to have this before December.
This one, this one, but not this amendment. No, the amendment had, the amendment can only, if we don't do any, you don't have to pass it, but it has to be presented to the board every year in December.
And that's what you've, you've been doing within the...
Yeah, and if we, if, if we did nothing, it would stay at the thirty-four. If we adopt it, it would, you know, then we'd go with the five precincts. So, but if we didn't, I suppose, yeah, if we didn't act on it, then we just, it would stay the same.
That's correct.
If we wanted to change it, we'd have to pass this. But I think that, um, in, in the past, our CFO has wanted to present this and put this on the agenda so we have the opportunity to look at it. That'd be nice. So if, yeah, okay.
Is this something that can be put on throughout the year at any time?
I believe it has to be presented in December.
Presented in December, voted on in December?
Yes, we adopt it for the next year. So this would be if we had, but we, if we would have a special election outside of the November.
And it would just be, we would be using your, the regular thirty-four.
The regular, yes. And the chance of that happening.
And we'll just bring it to every year.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, that concludes.
Well, what, uh, just before you jump on, I just wanted, you know, if anybody else has any other comments, but also if we, this goes on the consent agenda, then it would, no, it's going to be a special one. Okay, okay. Member Oswald, do you have anything to offer? I know that...
I, I can give you a little bit of history on that in that, um, when this first was presented to us a few years ago, um, I think it was just an overlooked thing that we had never done before, but then we, uh, you know, our teams were alerted that we needed to do it. And so the business team presented us with an option, and, um, the, the school board directed me to go back and work with, um, then Business Services Assistant Jackie Dolan to come up with some kind of compromise between just having one precinct, um, or one, one polling place is what they presented to us for, um, the entire election and versus having thirty-four. And so Jackie Dolan and I worked on it, um, for a couple of weeks, and came up with, um, I believe it was two polling places per precinct, or not per precinct, per district. And, you know, we have, um, four districts, and, and then we had all of the townships too. So I think it came out to like twelve or thirteen. And then, for whatever reason, I, I'm, that was never made clear to me, the, the final one that came back was the one that presented, was, is presented to us tonight through email where it's just one per precinct. Um, I, I, and I guess my, my philosophy is you don't make voting harder. You're supposed to make it easier. So I guess I, I agree with Member Lachlan Kemp in that we need, you know, I would hope that, that the school board would support not making it harder for people to vote. And that would mean, um, supporting the cost of, of a citywide election. Um, should it, should it be needed, and, you know? I don't know how many times in the past that we have had to ever have a, a citywide election, um, that wasn't, you know, to fulfill a full term, or a special election, I guess I should say. So, um, and I don't know that it's ever been needed, and I would hope it's not ever needed in the future. I also think that the cost to the district of holding a, a, a bigger election or, you know, that we would have to support the cost would also give the school board member a little pause in trying to work out how to stay on the board rather than just leave, uh, because it, it's, you know, it, it's a big expense. I get it, but in, in this day and age of, of political divisive this, I think that, um, confusing people by needing, telling them they have to go to different places to vote and not understanding and all sorts of things happen. Um, that's just my opinion, that, that this resolution is not needed to be passed. But, um, the history is, isn't very long. It's only been a couple of years that we've, that we've been offered to pass this or not and, and vote on it. So, um, that's what I got to say.
Thank you. I, it, it was a topic of conversation at the MSBA coffee and conversation yesterday. There are, um, probably smaller districts than ours, but there are many districts that do, um, reduce their polling places for special elections. And so it's not uncommon, but I think the geographics and just the size of Duluth, it just would, it would be more difficult. And like all of you have said, I think it, we, we want to, um, encourage our community to vote and not make it harder. I know with the redistricting, it's already... I know with the redistricting, it's already probably a little, a little bit of a challenge because I think some, even as this past election, went to their, their polling place that was historically theirs, only to find out that they had been redistricted and they didn't know that. And then they kind of felt, you know, kind of disengaged right then and there. So. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. It's not on the consent agenda. It is a resolution. It's kind of, this would be a point of order would be, we wouldn't even have to vote on it. If we just didn't do anything, it would stay with our resolution of districts, thirty-four precincts. Am I wrong on that? Unless we just want to make a commitment to our community that we value voting. So we will not go forward with it.
I don't think voting to support this does that you don't value voting. It says that you're balancing a couple of different things.
True, true, true.
I, I plan to support it just because I feel like balancing fiscal responsibility and access to the vote in a very, very, very slight infinitesimal probability that this would happen.
So that concludes the HR business report. And so we'll go on to ten C, our policy committee report from Chair of that committee, Member Lachlan Kemp.
Sure, I'll keep this quick. Our meeting was on December 6th and we have, we had two policies for our first reading. Policy 408, subpoena of a school district employee and appreciate HR Director Teresa Severance bringing it forward as we've seen the need. And so this is a first reading on this. We do not have a policy, but it is a model policy from our associations. And then the second was, is policy 410, family and medical leave policy. And this is to replace policy 4111. The Family and Medical Leave Act has not changed. It's really more updating with more specific definitions. And so it's more to update it. And so we had a first reading on that. And then we had two policies for our second reading and one is policy 722. This is the one we've been discussing on under public data and data subject request. And then for second reading was policy 534, school meals policy. And again, just some really good, more respectful language changes in that, this policy. And so those are the policies. All of them will be on the consent agenda. And Member Sedowski and Member Sandholm, do you have any other thing you want to add on our policy committee?
Thank you, Chair Lachlan. No, I just think it's great that we're looking at our school board policy and trying to take those steps towards eliminating shaming of students in our lunchrooms or in our cafeterias. That's, that's a good, good thing to do. And I think it's, there's a big effort statewide to make that happen.
And I would just say I appreciated the background that was brought to us about the subpoena of a school district employee and then the family and medical leave policy, just the explanation. And, you know, would always encourage people to kind of go back and watch that meeting to kind of hear some of the good discussion that came from that meeting on this. But, and appreciate the work of our staff to bring those policies forward and just appreciate our committee.
Thank you. And so we, again, all of these will be on the consent agenda. And that was our meeting.
So if the first readings are on our consent agenda, that doesn't mean that they're approved? Or are they ones that we just are going to do for a first reading?
They're just approved for a first reading.
Okay.
Because most policies have a first and a second reading. And so they'll be brought back at the next meeting and then we can discuss it more or if there's other additional information we ask for.
So agenda item number 11 is just general board committee updates. So of the committees that we have that are either within our community or within our school district that we sit on, are there any updates, anything we should know, any information?
I got snowed out of both about a month, so I don't have any updates.
And what were those? Parks?
Parks and Rec and then EAC, Education Council. And I know that they've set their January meeting, so. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think I gave an update. I am on the Duluth Community Foundation, Duluth Public Schools Endowment Board. And we started our, as board members, we go out to the schools and do about a 10-minute presentation at staff meetings to promote schools and staff to apply for these 500 to $5,000 grants. And so we started that and I got snowed out of two. I was scheduled for two, but I was here at East for their staff meeting and I was at another school. I can't remember where, at Homecraft, yeah, a week or two ago. So they're fun to do.
And I'm on a committee, but it's not necessarily that I was appointed. I was appointed by the Governor and I sit on the Board of School Administrators. And I just want to thank our HR Director and, you know, for your, your awareness and acknowledgement and you know the policies about the licensures that are needed for our superintendent, assistant superintendent, deans of students are now included in that licensure, so are community ed directors, so are special education directors. And just, we're finding though across the state that our district is in great shape with their, with their processes and their licensures. But just trying to get the word out across the state, there are school districts and there are school boards. School boards should, you know, be aware that there are licensure requirements and there are variances. So when we get a hire, when we are hiring in those positions, school board members should have an eye towards licensure. There's variances applied and they'll certainly are done well, but many school districts don't follow that, or not many. Some school districts just do not know about BOSA, about the Board of School Administrators. So just, we have monthly meetings. They're virtual or they can be virtual. Moving on, we're on number 12, which is the consent agenda. And we've had time to look at them. Our committee chairs have referenced them as far as what's on the consent agenda from their committees. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Member Eater has moved the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm is a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as we've seen in our board book, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, our consent agenda is approved. Moving on then to our resolutions from committee reports. And there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, like nine of them. And I've mixed up my order a little bit, but I know that Paul is doing, you know, we're kind of going down this way. So if you reference your resolution, then we'll know which ones. Paul has the certified tax levy.
Resolution B 12223925, certified tax levy 2022 payable 2023. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, to hereby set the levy for 2022 payable 2023 at forty-three million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight point eight seven dollars. I move Resolution B 12223925.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Eater's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Our next resolution, Member Sedowski, it is the resolution about establishing, reestablishing precincts.
Sure. I'll move Resolution B 12, B dash 12 dash 22 dash 3926, resolution establishing precincts in polling places for the Duluth Public Schools. Our district in 2023, where is the precinct boundaries of the Duluth Public School District, which consists of the territories of the City of Duluth, City of Rice Lake, Normana, North Star, Unorganized 23, Guineasan, Unorganized 2, and Lakewood Townships, remain as listed below following state legislative redistricting. And where's the district reestablishes these precincts with those boundaries as required by Minnesota statutes, 204B point 14 subdivision 3C. And where's the district will utilize the polling places for the City of Duluth as authorized by the City of Duluth, which are currently located here. One through, want me to read them?
No.
No? Okay. Where is the polling places for the City of Rice Lake, Normana, North Star, Unorganized 23, Guineasan, Unorganized 2, and Lakewood Townships in the State of Minnesota, remain at the following, the City of Rice Lake City Hall, Normana, North Star Township Hall, Guineasan Community Center, Lakewood Town Hall. The district hereby reestablishes these locations as the designated polling places for these precincts in accordance with Minnesota statutes 204B point 16. So I'll move that one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Lachlan Kemp's second's resolution. All those in favor of the resolution about precincts and polling places, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, resolution carries. Our next resolution is Member Lachlan Kemp on transportation alternative.
Sure. I move Resolution B 12223927, resolution of support for the transportation alternative grant for Campus Connector Segment 6 to provide improvements to the intersection of East Superior Street and Condon Park Drive for the City of Duluth. Resolve that the City of Duluth act as a legal sponsor for the transportation alternative project as contained in the 2022 grant applications to be submitted prior to January 13th, 2023, and that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to apply to the Minnesota Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration for a grant not to exceed 600,000 for funding of Campus Connector Segment 6 shared use path. Further resolve that the city has the legal authority to apply for financial assistance and the institutional managerial and financial capability to ensure adequate project administration. Further be resolved that if awarded the funding, the school district commits to provide any permanent easement at the Condon Park Elementary School. Further resolve that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to execute such documents as are necessary to implement the project on behalf of the city.
Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Member Sandholm's second. Are you keeping up? There's a lot to write.
Yep.
Okay, good deal. So we have Member Lachlan's motion and Member Sandholm's second on this resolution. All those in favor of the resolution about the transportation alternative grant for Campus Connector, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Our next one is our resolution on our authorized bank that Member Kirby will read in, motion in.
This is Resolution B 12223928, authorized bank account signer, December 2022. Resolve by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that it hereby authorizes the following, district building community adds a banking institution's Harbor Point Credit Union. And we add the authorized signers to be Lauren Mulmer and Jeremy Rupp and remove the authorized signer of the city account. I move the resolution of B 12223928.
And is there a second?
Second.
Member Sedowski's second. All those in favor of resolution about the authorized bank account signers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Our next resolution is acceptance of donations. And Member Eater?
Resolution B dash 12 dash 223929 is a resolution of acceptance of donations to the Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in acceptance of terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various individuals and organizations, I move Resolution B dash 12 dash 22 dash 3929, acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools.
And we'll do a roll call vote, so.
Okay, but we're going to do a second first.
Oh, we'll do a second, sorry.
Member Lachlan Kemp's second.
Perfect.
Roll call it there, Members Sedowski.
All right, Member Eater.
Yep.
Member Kirby.
Yes.
Member Lachlan Kemp?
Yes.
Member Lachlan?
Yes.
Member Oswald?
Yes.
I vote yes. Member Sandholm?
Yes.
Perfect. Motion passes seven zero.
Our next resolution is Resolution B dash 12 dash 22 dash 3930 is a resolution to accept grant awards. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full. And whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these organizations. So we have two grants from the Citadel Funding for Denfeld High School with Principal Tom Tuscan and the award of $5,000 for AP computer science course for the 2324. And then a Greater Denfeld Foundation Grant for Geraldine Davidson, who's the media specialist at Denfeld High School in the amount of 960, fundsably used to purchase supplies to create under computer desk bookshelves. So I move B 12223930, resolution or granted awards. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Eater's second. All those in favor of accepting the grants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Our next resolution by Member Sandholm is the board member attendance.
And this is under special resolutions and actions as we move on.
Okay.
I move Resolution SP 12223924, board member attendance at the 2023 MSBA Leadership Conference. Be resolved that Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, pay costs incurred as per district policy for school board members to attend Minnesota School Board Association's 2023 Leadership Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota on January 12th through 1/3 on 2023. I move Resolution SP 12223924.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Kirby's second. All those in favor of resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Let's go back under, under our agenda of 13G. Because I didn't realize we were going under 14, but I think we can still do this. And this is where, this is the resolution B dash 12 dash 22 dash 3931. It's the amending resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. Whereas the Duluth School Board previously adopted a resolution combining polling places and whereas changes have been made to the available polling places, now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709 as follows. And you can read all of that. I don't think I have to read the whole, the whole resolution. But I'll make the motion of Resolution B dash 12 dash 22 dash 31, 3931. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Member Eater's second. All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
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 So resolution thirty, B twelve dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine thirty-one does not pass on a vote of six to one.
Actually, I abstained.
Oh, you abstained?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I think, so Kirby abstaining.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask for abstentions. So Kirby abstains?
Oh, Kirby abstains.
So it is, but if you go to the MSBA parliamentary procedure at the training, an abstention really goes to the vote that is, has the most vote. It can be recorded as an abstention, abstaining, but it actually then still is a six to one vote. According to Terry Morrow of the MSBA.
Wouldn't it be a one to six vote?
Yeah, it's one to six.
A one to six vote, yeah.
I think for clarification, I guess we should do a voice vote just because this, this now has been a part of discussion, so.
Sure, we can do a voice, a vote, a voice vote. Not a bad idea.
A roll call vote.
A roll call vote. That's right.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is still on the resolution about reducing polling places.
Member Eater?
Uh, yes.
Uh, member Kirby?
I abstained.
Member Laffler Kim?
No.
Uh, member Lowbaugh?
No.
Uh, member Oswald?
No.
Oh, no. Uh, member Sandholm?
No.
So again, we have five no's, one yes, and one abstention. But you recorded as a one-six vote, this does not pass.
Okay, thank you.
So then we, we still have some resolutions. It is the resolution for the firemen and oilers employees. This is resolution H R dash twelve dash twenty-two dash thirty-nine thirty-two. I move that resolved by the School Board of Independent School District seven oh nine, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the collective bargaining agreement between Independent School District seven oh nine and the firemen and oilers employees, a summary of which has been provided electronically to all school board members, be approved and adopted for the periods of July first, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four inclusive. And that the chairperson and clerk of the school board hereby authorized to execute said agreement on behalf of the school board. Do I have a second?
Second.
So all those in favor of accepting the contracts for the firemen and oilers, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Vote carries seven zero. I should always ask for abstention. Oh, yep. And? We have the audit. Who has that one to approve?
I didn't see it.
Did I hand that?
I didn't see it.
I just had it listed as.
Was it, wasn't it part of the?
It's under the action name. There's not a paper for it. I just have it listed as approval of the F one.
We'll go into that a little bit.
The presentation is earlier in the agenda. So I didn't attach the.
I got you, okay. So I'm just looking for a, a motion of approval of the twenty twenty-two audit?
Somewhere.
Second. Member Eater makes the motion. Member Laffler Kim accepts. All those in favor of approval of the audit that was presented tonight and what we've had in our packet over the last weekend, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries to adopt the audit as presented, seven zero. And then we're on number fifteen. And under fifteen, we are doing some, some really fun stuff. So it's the MSBA's recognition of school board members. And this is a, something the Minnesota School Board Association is, is putting forward as kind of new. They, they give a lot of awards and they give them out at their January conference. But they also want school boards within their community to recognize the good work that the school board members in their community are doing. So tonight, we are going to present something. Do we have them, the certificates? Oh, we do, okay. So tonight we would like to recognize two of our school board members. First, I would like to recognize school board member Oswald there on the screen. Oh, it's a pin actually. She's going to get a pin. And they'll, they were, they're, they're going to give it to her at the, at the conference. But we want to recognize member Oswald for completing three hundred or more hours of attendance at MSBA sponsored meetings and activities. So member Oswald, over her years on the board, has attended and has gone to a lot of trainings, three hundred plus hours. So we want to thank member Oswald for her leadership and commitment to our school board. So thank you. And then we have the leadership development certificate. And we want to recognize board member Amber Sedowski. Member Sedowski joined our board just under a year ago and she has been an invaluable member of this board. We would like to thank and recognize her for completing the Minnesota School Board Association Leadership Development Program. To complete this program, board members complete four workshops, which include training about the role of the school board member, school finance and management, working as a team and representing our community through policy and, and engagement. So they're called phase one, two, three, and four on behalf, as the MSBA trains us. And we just want to thank member Sedowski for her leadership and commitment to the training in her first year of, of her board.
Oh, he's just going to mess up this.
This height is kind of awesome.
All right.
So I'm looking to a motion to adjourn.
Can I do a special last thing?
Sure.
Usually you say, do you have anything else? And I was waiting for that.
Okay, well.
Okay. Jill, on behalf of the board, even though you will be presiding over the organizational meeting in January, we just wanted to thank you for your leadership this year and your commitment and all the time you put in. And I know David and I know from being former board chairs, the amount of time it takes to be a board chair. And we just really greatly appreciate it. So there's a point seven down there for you. Take off, cover it up now because it's cold out. And a little gift certificate to do some relaxation.
Oh, well, thank you.
So thank you for your service.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. So now I'm looking, unless there's any, any other? I was going to bring M and Ms tonight to give to y'all to be, to. So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Member Sandholm's motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.